Because we're really smart like that and we figure things out right away.
We can.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Marshall County Board of Supervisors regular session here on October 8th, 2025. Now you're in here in the first floor meeting room. Notice the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You're requested to approach the podium right over there for use the microphone for recording. State your name and address for the record and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given an opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chair to read the item from the agenda. The board's given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call will follow. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Hibs. Kyle.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve today's agenda.
I move that we approve today's agenda.
I will second. Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. All right, on to our service awards today. We'll start with our Buildings and Grounds Department, Cody Hildebrand and Bowen Fleming. They are both mechanic two. They've been here 10 years. Lucas, do you have anything to share on their great work that they do and a lot of stuff that's gone on here since they've been here in the last 10 years?
I do, I do. Lucas, back to Buildings and Grounds. I just want to thank Bo and Cody. They are an absolute integral part of our department and I couldn't do what I do without them. So, thank you.
That's great.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Come on up, boys.
We do not, we do not have Carol's signature so we can, you can take them without hers?
Oh, yeah.
Your pictures are always better. And I'm not stressed. And then I make our website and that's nice.
Want Carol to sign those and then get them to you?
Yeah.
Hey, thank you so much.
Always a fun crew to have around and all that they do for the courthouse and our grounds, so. All right, next up, we have Kent Hayes, also 10 years, secondary roads, truck driver three. All that he can share today on that?
Polk Island, Polk County engineer. Kent didn't choose to be with us this morning. He's working hard, but he's, even though it says truck driver three, he's on our sign crew and it's kind of a collective bargaining story, but truck driver three pays more than sign crew two. So even though he is sign crew two, he's truck driver three. Makes sense? Okay. Thank you, Kent.
Yes, thanks Kent. All that he does, 10 years. We'll get Carol's signature on this one as well. We'll get that to you. Any other comment, Kevin?
No.
All right. Thanks to our three employees of 10 years of service today. On to number six, the proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. We have Lisa from the Attorney's Office going to be sharing with us proclamation with us today.
Marshall County, Iowa, proclamation of the Board of Supervisors. Proclamation of October as domestic violence awareness month in Marshall County. Whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a time to raise an awareness to the staggering problem, encourage reporting of violent offenses, and support advocacy efforts in our communities. Whereas, according to Break the Silence, it is estimated that more than 10 million adults experience domestic violence in the U.S. each year. Whereas, one in every three teenagers, one in every four women, and one in every six men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime. Whereas, one in four members of the LGBT community will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Whereas, the problem of domestic violence crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifference. Whereas, women and men are not the only survivors. Children, the elderly, family pets, and responding law enforcement officers are counted among the survivors. Whereas, most domestic violence incidences are never reported. Whereas, the United Nations has identified the home as the most dangerous place for a woman. Whereas, domestic violence is a leading cause of injury to women, more than car accidents, muggings, and rapes combined. Whereas, according to the National Intimate Partner in Sexual Violence Survey, 42% of women in the United States reported experienced physical violence by intimate partner in their lifetime, and 49.9% reported psychological aggression by an intimate partner. Whereas, every nine seconds, a woman in the United States is assaulted by an intimate partner. Whereas, women aged 16 through 24 are most likely to be victimized by an intimate partner. Whereas, according to the Family Violence Prevention Fund, 15.9% of pregnant women are victims of intimate partner violence. Whereas, according to Break the Silence, 50% of female murderers in the United States are killed by intimate partners. Whereas, prior domestic violence in a household makes a woman 14.6 times more likely to be the victim of a female domestic homicide. Whereas, having one or more guns in the home makes a woman 7.2 times more likely to be the victim of a female domestic homicide. Whereas, more than three and up to 10 million children witness domestic violence in their homes every year. Whereas, boys who witness domestic violence are twice as likely to abuse their own partners and children when they become adults. Whereas, domestic violence victims lose nearly eight million days of paid work per year in the U.S. alone. Whereas, the cost of intimate partner violence in the U.S. alone exceeded $5.8 billion per year, with $4.1 billion for direct medical and healthcare services and $1.8 billion for productivity losses. Whereas, survivors of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, sheltering, transitional housing, and other supportive services so they can escape the cycle of abuse. Whereas, we as a county encourage survivors and their families to seek assistance from programs from appropriate survivor service organizations, including Access, Luna, and other local programs and state coalitions. Whereas, the Iowa Domestic Violence Help Line is 1-800-770-1650, and the Access Crisis Hotline is 1-855-983-4641. Whereas, it is important to recognize the importance of the compassion and dedication of individuals who serve survivors of domestic violence and their families, including local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, crime and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare providers, law enforcement, allied professionals, and survivor service organizations. Whereas, our community must make ending domestic violence a priority. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marshall County Board of Supervisors proclaim the month of October as a domestic violence awareness month in Marshall County and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting those who are working towards its end.
Thank you very much for that. It's October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's always a good reminder of what's going on out there. It's easy to put your head in the sand of what goes on out there and that there's a lot of people going through a lot of difficult things out there. Much appreciation to our county attorney's office. They do a great job of helping out victims, obviously our law enforcement as well, and all the agencies that help out with domestic violence. And I think we all have a role as individuals as well to keep our eyes open to those that might fall victim to that and how we can be caring and helpful to them. So, any other comment on that? Thank you very much. On to number seven, consent agenda. 7A, approve previous regular session minutes from September 24th, 2025. 7B, approve previous special session minutes from September 26th. Approve claims as audited and authorize the auditor recorder to issue payment of the same. Listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the current month will be published as part of the first meeting of the following month. We have personnel changes, new hire Omar Rico Alba. Secondary roads, TD1, $31.57 per hour, start on or after October 9th, 2025, and a new hire Antonio Ordaz Mendoza. Secondary roads, TD1, $31.57 per hour, to start on or after October 9th. File manure management plans for Hatch Finisher Farm, number 70460, at 1431, A.Avenue, Gladbrook, signed with changes. And that is the end of today's consent agenda.
I move that we approve today's consent agenda.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. Number eight, discussion and possible action on the 2026 calendar for meeting dates in non-union floating holiday.
Cassandra emailed all of the department heads and kind of figured out everybody's kind of what they were wanting, looking at the 2026 calendar. And you think, oh, my goodness, it's so far away. But here we are into October already. So, we will have on the calendar our training day, which will be February 23rd, 2026, which is a holiday. And then our payrolls do fall November 27th, which is historically called Black Friday, but, you know, I don't go shopping that day anymore, but, you know, whatever. And then Christmas Eve, which is the Thursday because next year Christmas falls on a Friday. So that's actually the biweekly payroll date. So that is not a federal holiday. So that's the day that the payday will be on those dates. Historically, we have always, you've all approved a half a day on Christmas Eve. So I don't, that'll be, you know, one of the things that I'm assuming that will be done today, but that is all up to you. But when we kind of went through all of our department and then all of the department heads, floating holiday on Monday, December 28th, was kind of the preference of making Christmas just a longer weekend if people are traveling. So, that was the recommendation. Cassandra, did I mess anything up?
You didn't. You did great.
Thank you for that. Thanks for your work on finding out for me what works best. I think looking at the calendar, that 28th makes sense. 28th December makes sense for a floating holiday. And I did not see anything else on this calendar that jumped out on anything change on it. So I am comfortable with it. So, thank you.
Okay, okay. So, in that particular case, then, we would just need a motion to name the floating holiday as December 28th, 2026, and to approve the half day on December 24th of 2026.
Okay.
For the calendar. Those would be the two, the two pieces that we would need approval on.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the non-union floating holiday on 12, the half a day on 12/24/2026, and the floating holiday of 12/28/2026, and approve the, all the meeting dates for 2026.
I will second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. On to number nine, Resolution 2025-25, appointing a new plan sponsor for the Marshall County 457B Deferred Compensation Plan.
So if you pull up this resolution, our previous documentation has the names of Mary Stubbs on it, which it doesn't show who's the previous Maria, and Karen Squires, who's two people prior to me.
Three.
Three. It's really old. They won't let us do anything to update things. And right now, we have a payment, they're lost, two payments.
Payments.
That are lost. They won't tell us anything.
So we need to get this updated?
Yes. So we need to get these names updated and, yeah. To say Maria was a little mad was an understatement. So that's why she got this rolling and, you know, saying, what do we need? We have to name the people. They would not let us name the positions. We thought it'd be way easier to just name the positions so it could flow, but they said, no, it has to be the people's names. We, you know, we of course did think about having Mary come in. She was here for a retirement party last week, but it seems really wrong to have a person that's not employed here to do something like this. So, we didn't do that and here we are. So.
Well, simple fix. We can get.
We can get this done and get, we are naming three folks, myself, Maria, and Cassandra. So we'll have three names on it. So hopefully we don't get in this pickle again.
Well, I'll move that we adopt the Resolution 2025, actually 20025, appointing a new plan sponsor for the Marshall County 457B Deferred Compensation Plan.
I will second. I haven't read that full resolution. That'll be submitted in the record. Any further questions or concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. All right. Resolution 2025-26, authorization of the auditor recorder to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, and I will explain what this is. This is for those, like the votes on the proxies was one of the things. We've not been able to sign a few of these because the timeline was too short. Waiting for the Board of Supervisor meeting to put it on the consent agenda, it was too far out and we just pitched them. There's also some healthcare plan documents that are very low level. The full plan documentation, we will still bring to the board as we always have. These are more the, I'm going to say, lesser documentation items that just allows us due to timing of things and, yeah, lesser items.
Do we run this through the county attorney's office, make sure we're, that's normal procedure?
We can. Other counties don't bring any health documents to board. I put that out there and they go, you have the board saying, any of your health plan? I go, well, it's for a year. I mean, most of them are a year. So that's why they said the auditor signs them is because they're one year ago, but it's for the whole county. And the health plan is the board's budget. So why wouldn't, and then all of, you know, everybody I've talked to go, oh. I'm thinking there might be counties changing to have the board sign off on their health plan.
As they should.
Documents, as they should, because that's your budget.
Yep.
So, yeah, the couple I called is probably changing. These are more, yeah, lesser things. I did sign a piece for the cars that was something so we could get the little car tag things to come out. Yeah, little pieces of things. But for the full things, yeah, no, all that needs to come through the board because that's your budget.
All right. Good with that? Kevin?
Yeah.
Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, yeah. I move that we adopt the Resolution 2025 to 2026, authorization for the auditor recorder to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. On to number 11, Marshall Ridge Farms LLC Construction Permit Application and Recommendation. Looking at this, all the necessary permits, easements were obtained and Master Matrix completed and met requirement.
And we got it published?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that was published in the paper.
Yep. Is there anyone here to speak on this at all?
I've heard, we've heard nothing. We've gotten, nobody come in.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the application recommendation today?
I move that Marshall Ridge Farms LLC obtained a construction permit application recommendation.
All right, and I'll second that. Any further questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. Number 12, approve use of Marshall County Courthouse grounds for Hunt the Block on October 23rd, 2025. Yes, come on up, please.
Good morning. Danielle Leiken, Executive Director, Marshall Town Central Business District. Do you need the address? Okay. So, as you know, we, well, maybe you don't, every year, MCBD invites our downtown businesses to participate in an event called Hunt the Block. It's an opportunity, a community event to give back to the community and our businesses pass out candy. It's grown pretty big in popularity. Last year, we estimate there was about 3,500 attendees. So, in interest of public safety this year, we will be closing the streets for this event. So all the streets will be closed starting around 2:00 and be reopened around 7:00 P.M. With the construction happening in the event plaza, we are hoping to be able to utilize the horseshoe to stage some of our first responders who come down and participate in this event. So the police department, the fire department, historically the sheriff's department has also participated in that. And so we were just hoping to maybe put, and we also have some other participants coming from outside of our downtown community, select physical therapy from the hospital. And so we were just hoping to be able to utilize the horseshoe for those first responders if possible. Also, the sidewalk will be open on the north side of Main Street across from the courthouse, but that sidewalk is going to be very narrow. And so we may see some traffic going across the courthouse lawn. Pedestrian traffic, obviously. So we were just hoping to be able to utilize the courthouse for that purpose.
Perfect. And timing on this?
It's, the actual event is from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M. We'll begin closing the streets at 2:00 because sometimes it takes a while to get cars off the streets.
And the need of the horseshoe, full horseshoe, partial horseshoe, and at what time for that?
I would imagine they'd start setting up between 3:00, 3:30.
And then how much of the horseshoe, all of it or half of it, or what was the kind of thoughts on it?
Can it hold a fire truck, Lucas?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was my only concern is the weight of the vehicles, if that was going to be a problem.
Yeah. My thought is that we don't necessarily close the horseshoe while we're open, but we can reserve maybe like half, like the outer ring or the inner ring to start staging some of those, some of that equipment and trucks. And then once 4:30 rolls around, then we can close it off and, you know, they can expand or do whatever at that point. But we can start reserving some spots for, you know, big fire trucks. And I think Kim brings out her EMA trailer and the sheriff, I don't know if he's planning on bringing anything, but there's just, there's a lot of stuff. So if, we'll just kind of block off parts of it until the courthouse closes, was my idea there.
Is that sufficient?
Yes, yeah.
Lucas, any thoughts?
If we can't use it, we'll have to move them to the street.
Yeah. Any thoughts on this setup? Any issue for us?
No, not at all. The only other thing I would say is I know that we have some other businesses that come in downtown and if they wanted to utilize maybe the front side, the north side, some of those sidewalks up there, I don't have any problem with them staging up there either. So.
And we also have access to the vacant city lots for some of those as well. So.
Yeah. I'm good with it.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas.
Thank you. Any other question?
Question?
Do we, it's the 20, Thursday, October 23rd. I was just checking to see if there was court, like.
We sure do.
Is it jury?
Yep.
But if it's all years over, it's not that big deal, especially after.
We possibly have two different juries. There's a district court on the 24th, 21st, and then on the 23rd, or DAC.
Is there anything, if there's a jury in and they've parked on the, I mean, do we want to maybe have the outer ring not available all day?
Probably not all day. I'm thinking like starting after lunch, maybe like 1:00 or so.
I haven't had to be on jury, so I don't know what the timing is for jurors, if they would park or anyone involved in court that day would, they park in the morning and not leave till late in the day? That could create an issue?
Hard to say.
Hard to say.
No stress.
And you can see this is where the city wants to, they want to close it all the way down to center, right there, and then at the alley over here on First Ave. And, is Kim here? No, okay. She asked me this morning why we were doing that, and I think it's because they want to send pedestrian traffic down to the horseshoe and then come back up and around, is why the city wanted it closed at that location for pedestrian safety.
Danielle, I'm online.
Okay.
And, yeah, and we're, CERP will work with Danielle with whatever traffic she needs to, you know, work with. I, I'm not sure about, yeah, we were just wondering what the county needed, and it sounds like that maybe some parking issues for your jury trial?
You guys need up whatever parking on the street you want for juries just by placarding it. I used to do it back in Sioux City all the time.
MCBD will put out signs the day before that say this will be closed for a private event, and it usually has the date and time so that people have 24 hours notice. And those are out there the day of, like the street is closing at 2:00 P.M.
Yeah, I just think we might need to want to close part of the horseshoe earlier in the day just to protect it. So at least they get, there's some areas just in case jury leaves later in the day. And I think if we do that, it will be, we'll be fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that we approve the use of the Marshall County Courthouse grounds for Hunt the Block on October 23rd, 2025.
And I will second that. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. On to number 13, public forum. Time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum.
I'm going to get up if nobody else says. Mark Wyatt, 2601 Ridge Road. I'm starting to feel like that old man that still believes in Santa Claus because I keep thinking that something's going to change and it doesn't with the, with the way the roads worked over in my area. The, I've seen in the past, yesterday, a guy running a maintainer came down the road and after he was gone, all I noticed was on 200, well, scratch that, from 260th, southbound on Ridge, on the east side of the road, he just left about a foot tall curb of gravel sitting up against there to make sure nothing ever made it to the ditch. And the other sides of the road, in very few places are there, is there any access or ability for the water to drain into the ditch? It's just, it's cut down to where you have like a soil curb. And I, I don't know. It's, we've done everything that can be done, okay, for as far as, I've been coming to the board meetings here and I've made it through two sheriffs, and it's been through different board members. And we've had a petition signed by the residents in the area where everybody but I think one signed it. And it was an elderly lady down at the end of the, at the end of the hill on Ridge. I don't know what else there is to do. And there's, there's, I don't know. I don't know. I'm at a loss completely. When I came home yesterday and saw the, the guy running the maintainer, the, which would be the south side of the road and on the north side of the road on 260th coming up, there's still those, those things, those ruts that are, that are left in place that if somebody's tired, tugged that thing, if they didn't notice it, and they just started driving down the road, their wheel gets tucked by one of those ruts, and you've got somebody in a ditch somewhere or into a mailbox bank, or, and I understand, I looked at the driveways coming down the road, and there are some that are, that it crouch out and they prohibit the water from getting into the ditch from the roadway, for at least from theirs. It dumps out onto the road, and that's where some of that rut stuff happens. But we can keep talking about that, why it happens, and what needs to be done for it, but I just need somebody to do something about it. There's a guy across the street from me that he and his wife, Roger and Barb, have their house on the market. They moved into town and bought something at that little place across from the Duck Pond and Menards down there, and their house is for sale. They put their house up for sale for a lot less than I thought that it would have gone for, and nobody's biting on it at all. And I can't help to think that when people come down that road, especially young couple, when they're coming down that road, the roadways that lead in there, and they're seeing the issues with the road, that's just, that's not affecting somebody going, yeah, I'd like to live here, or I wouldn't like to live here. And so, it's a, it's, it's affecting people even more so than just the people that are, that are driving it every day. And I'll be the first one to tell you that the condition of that place stinks. You know what I mean? The conditions of, of how the roads are laid out, I mean, I guarantee, I understand that it's hard to deal with. I, I can see where it would be an issue fixing what's going on with that thing, but being that I can see an issue doesn't matter squat because we still need to fix it. And we're coming up on winter, and all this water gets trapped on that road and starts turning to ice, and there's a couple good deep and bank ones, one right in front of my house, you know, that somebody's going to get hurt skidding off into that. Somebody's already, I think before we, the year before we got there, somebody died from going off the end, coming down Ridge, going north on Ridge and sliding through that intersection, going over that, that drop off that's over there. It's just, something needs to get done. And again, I don't understand, I don't know what more I can do with it other than keep coming here and saying the same thing or other things about it. I've offered up, any property of mine that you want on that easement stuff, take it. I give a rat. You know what I mean? It's just, to get it going and to get the road working the way it's supposed to, I don't care, you know? I don't know how far that goes into the thing. There's a whole ditch width over there that, that somebody's can have. There's from the, the west or the east side of my yard. There's a good chunk of property over there that, whatever it takes to make it work, I don't care. I do not care. And I'll sign any paper you want me to sign to do it. I'll just, just, something needs to get done. That corner by my house is just eroding even more. I mean, and it's getting to the point where some guy went around the corner to, because I was coming up on Ridge to make the turn left west onto 260th, and he snuggled over by that corner, and his wheels track came really close to going down into my ditch, and so I don't even know if he knows how close he came to that, because I was just looking at the, at the track, that his tire made navigate in that corner. And that's a drop. I mean, it's a good six feet down into my ditch before you hit any culvert, so. Just before somebody gets hurt or before the road gets in any, any more disrepair, okay? Want anything else from me? Okay.
Paul, is there any update on, on schedule of roads you've been working on and what can be done on that corner?
Well, that would be a long schedule, but Paul Guilenfeld, county engineer. And it's the same thing I've said before, is that this section, this 260th and Ridge Road area, because of the number of residential drives and houses, it limits what we can do to fix things. We, we can go in there and make changes, but it is going to be very invasive, and, you know, when we, when we have to fix a problem like this, what we, what we tend to do is try to make vertical changes to the grade. It needs some vertical, it needs redesigned completely. It was never designed in the first place. It was just a old country road that had some, some pretty property on it where you could build houses. But it was never designed to be a residential area, and now the, with the driveways, the tools and the talents that my operators have for rural, rural roadways don't work here. You know, that's, everything's, we, we tried different, you know, we've had different operators out there the, the last, I know we've had two different operators out there, but it, it's still just a, it's a, a little anomaly in their system when they have rural, regular rural sections everywhere they go. This is not that. This is a, this is a suburb, you know, type residential area that to be a rock road really isn't the way it should be. But it's, it's going to be costly, and it's going to take some time, and it's going to be very invasive to the daily life of everybody out there for a while to get it right. But again, we're, we're also dealing with local road system, so whatever we do here has to be funded with local money. We can't use our farm-to-market money. We can't use any federal money. It's strictly Marshall County money. We'll keep the road open. We'll keep maintaining it. That's all we, we don't have any choice on that. We have to keep things, you know, serviceable. And that's the, that's the goal here right now is just to keep it usable.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks to NAN. I'm to understand you received my petition for a engine brake sign on Main Street. This is a little area where there's five farmsteads, and we're pretty close to the road, and so we get the brunt whenever the young truck drivers want to go through and let their engine brakes do the work that they should be using the brakes. It's not a very steep grade. I measured it. It's about 2%. I'm very familiar with the trucking industry, hadn't driven years ago, and this is an area that you just don't need to run your engine brake. So, I visited with the homes there, and we're all in agree, in agreeance that it's not necessary, and I think it'd be a positive step forward if we could get a no engine brake sign about 7/10 west of the stop sign, Marsh Avenue. Just a, I don't know, see if that'll curb it. But it can be kind of spicy if you're sitting in your home and they're running back and forth to the grain elevator. So, anyway, for your consideration, please, if you have any questions?
Uh, no, not right now. We'll take that to, we'll have our engineer take a look at it, also our sheriff, just to see if, what recommendations they have on those areas. And, and we'll, we'll definitely consider that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I totally understand what you're saying here, because, you know, as a farmer myself, and, you know, there's this guys that just love to hear that thing.
It's great. No, I, I understand. It's a lot of fun sitting in there and letting it rip, but when you got to sit there in your front room, and there's some retired folks in there, and so I'm kind of stirring things up to see if we can't get that curbed a little bit.
I mean, they even do it when they run through the co-op, just low gear, high RPMs, and just let that thing chime. So, I can understand why it would be a nuisance in your area.
It's, it's not full-time. The, most of the professional truckers that go through there have the courtesy not to. It's the few that come in during harvest and whatnot that enjoy that engine brake.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you very much.
It's typical. It's a few apples that spare, that spoil the whole barrel, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning, everybody. Sydney Gruel, Marshall County Public Health Director. I am here to provide an update on the Legionella outbreak. So, as of this morning, we have identified 74 cases and two deaths related to the outbreak. Our last positive case was reported on September 25th, which tomorrow will mark two weeks. Legionella is a reportable disease by law, so any individual that tests positive at a healthcare facility, ooh, there goes my paper. At a healthcare facility, that positive test result has to be reported by that lab facility or the healthcare, the healthcare provider that tests it, and that positive result goes to Iowa HHS and that local health department simultaneously through the electronic lab reporting system. So, in case of, in the case of this outbreak, if someone lives outside of Marshall County, they will be followed up via their local health department. So, if they live in, say, Hardin County, Story County, Polk County, it doesn't matter, if they are tested here or tested in somewhere else, they're going to be followed up with their local health department. After they've been contacted by their local health department, they'll complete an interview as part of normal disease investigation follow-up, and this happens outside of outbreak status. So, we always follow up with reportable diseases, whether that be Legionella, E. coli, any form of STI, it just kind of depends. During this process, they're asked a series of questions to determine whether they meet the case definition of this particular outbreak, which is if they've traveled to, live, work, whatever it may be, in North Central Marshalltown. If they meet this case definition, that is when they, if they meet the case definition and they have a positive result, that is when they're added to that overall case count, and that case count is updated every day on the Iowa HHS website and updated by Iowa HHS. Those cases, we haven't seen an increase because we haven't had any positive cases, like I said, in two weeks. So, after the initial investigation, the cooling towers in northern Marshalltown appeared to be the most likely source, and all the investigations completed continue to support this theory. So, we've, again, identified 12 business centers with those cooling towers in the area where most of people, where most people were likely being infected. Each business center has been tested multiple times. We test in order to try and find the matching sequence or the matching fingerprint to that cooling tower. We tested, sorry, a positive match helps a lot, but the absence doesn't mean that we got the wrong track. So, just because we've tested, we don't find anything, doesn't mean that we're on the wrong track of it's not a cooling tower. To date, we have had one business center test positive for Legionella pneumophila serum Group 1, which is the Legionella that we are looking for, but unfortunately, it did not match the patient that we are looking for. That was an infected person, so it did not match one of the sequence types that we, so there's Legionella pneumophila serum Group 1, which is the Legionella that causes pneumonia in humans. There was a patient, we have taken samples from patients, that did not match the direct sequencing of the Legionella that we found in one of the towers to the patient that was one of the tested, so. Still no smoking gun, but the fact that we have found Legionella at all means that we've been on the right track, that it has been a cooling tower. So, each of these 12 business centers with the cooling towers started an additional disinfection work early in mid-September. Two of those businesses have completed full offline remediation, which is completing the full disinfection process. The fact that we haven't seen a case in nearly two weeks means that the disinfection process is working, and it makes completing the disinfection process and offline remediation by these businesses even more important to ensure that the bacteria is cleaned out for good. Is there any, that's all I have for updates. Is there anything that anybody has a question regarding?
Now, will these cooling towers have to be disinfected yearly, or?
All these business centers should have, these cooling towers should have water management plans. Hopefully, after this outbreak, that they continue to monitor these and prevent this further. We don't have in Iowa any form of regulation. Say, for example, New York has a cooling tower registry, and that is required for them to register their cooling towers and maintain those processes, but we do not have that in Iowa.
And there's any sort of regular inspection requirements for cooling towers unless something like this happens?
Not from the state side or public health side. They're, those businesses that own the cooling towers are process, are, are in charge of their own water management processes and maintaining those cooling towers.
Questions I, I've heard from people is since we have not had any positive cases in the last two weeks, there's some theories out there that it's because people aren't getting tested anymore or results aren't being submitted into the system. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, like I said, Legionella is reportable by law, so it's a, it's a communicable disease. They have to report it. So, say I go get tested today, and I test positive for Legionella. I live in Marshall County, so that has to be sent to Iowa HHS, and it would get sent here to Marshall County Public Health, and I would see the result. If someone got tested here at Unity Point Health, for example, and then lived in Polk County just because they were traveling here or they were visiting family, that result would get sent to Polk County Health Department, and that has to be followed up with their local health department, and then they have to ask all those questions, and then because of the outbreak, you know, there's, did you travel to Marshalltown? Did you travel anywhere near? And if they say no, then they're not added to the case count because they don't meet the case definition, because Legionella naturally happens in other places around. We see 30 to 70 cases in the state, or, yeah, in the state yearly, so it's not uncommon. It's just that they don't meet that case definition for this. So, people that are saying we've tested positive, they might live outside of the county and not have traveled in the area, so they don't meet that case definition, or they might not be telling the truth, so. Because they have to report it, and the labs directly report it too. There's no paper. It goes straight to, to, like I said, to the state and to us directly, so. Or say they traveled, like I said, from, we've had people where they live in another state. Again, they're coming to visit family. They may be admitted to the hospital or something, and they get tested. That's going to go back to their state health department and get tested there, and then there's a whole lot of background things that happen, so. We're definitely not, not reporting positive cases.
Any other questions for Sydney? Thank you for that update. We appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other public forum today? Onto item number 14, closed session per Iowa Code 21.51 subsection C pending litigation. Is there a motion?
I move that we go into closed session at?
9:49?
9:49.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes. All right. Entered into closed session, 9:49 AM.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.